Good morning, and thank you for coming out to our round two of our community meeting on redistricting. Your input and your attendance is very important to us. We want to make sure you are giving the most accurate information, and we hear your feedback on such. So every 10 years, as you know, the city has an obligation to conduct a redistricting process to ensure that the districts are equalized in population based on the results of the last census. So we would be conducting it based on the 2020 census information. So welcome once again, and I'll turn you over to our deputy city manager, Ginger Spencer.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you Councilwoman Hodge-Washington. So thank you all for joining us this early Saturday morning. It's great to see all your faces. And as the councilwoman said, we're here to talk about redistricting, and this is the round two of our meetings. So it's my pleasure to introduce the rest of the team who have been working on this. To my right, we have our city clerk Denise Archibald, who is heading up this process. To Denise's right, we have Chris Meyer, who is our former city attorney, as well as former city clerk for the city of Phoenix, and he has been involved in all of the redistricting processes since inception. And then to the councilwoman's left, we have our consultants with Arc Bridge Consulting. We have Preeti Mathur and Sam Mathur. And then lastly, I would like to thank all the staff who are helping us out this Saturday morning. So we have Erin with Phoenix TV. We have Lupe, Benji, as well as Mike from our city clerk office. And then we also have Cooper from Communications. And then we do have an interpreter this morning, and that's Ms. Carmen Colta. And with that, I will turn it over to Denise Archibald.
Thank you. Good morning. As Ginger mentioned, we are in round two of the community meetings for redistricting. And if you did attend round one, you'll hear a little bit about the process again today. I just wanted to go over the process briefly of this redistricting process. So we are using the same process that we used in prior years, in 1990, in 2000 and 2010. And to ensure an impartial and professional process, we did hire the consultant, as Ginger mentioned, with Arc Bridge Consulting, and Preeti and Sam Mathurs out of the Washington DC area. They were selected through a procurement process that was approved by the city council. We did have our initial round one of community meetings in June. And at that time, we provided information about how to participate, what the current districts were at in terms of the census data. And that included participating by making their own maps. And so people have the ability to make their own maps and submit those as well. And so that ability to submit the maps was open through August 1st. And we did receive submissions. And so from those submissions, and also numerous comments that we are still receiving through email and through the website as well. The consultants then took that information from round one, and they have compiled two alternative maps for review during this round two of community meetings. We have alternative map A and alternative map B. And so what we're looking for is for input now about both of these maps. Not so much necessarily picking one map over the other, but definitely what you like about each map and why, and what concerns you may have of each map and why as well. And so after these round two community meetings, then the consultant will bring back one final or one or two final maps to the council for final consideration. And the council will then vote on what they want the new boundaries to be. We are looking to schedule that meeting with the council on September 26th at the policy meeting. And at that time, then, they will have the ability to vote for our new boundaries. And then the boundaries will become effective January 1st of 2024, just in time for the election in November of 2024. And so we do have a lot of information still here outside, including copies of the maps for you. And we do have all of the information for redistricting online at phoenixredistricting.com. And we are still taking comments, both online and by email as well. So with that, I will kick it over to Preeti.
Good morning. Good morning. It's a Saturday morning, and it's so good to see all of you. I'm here. My name is Preeti Mathur, and I'm here to run this PowerPoint and show you what we have achieved so far. And if you attended the first meeting, you'll see that there are some slides from there. They're primarily as a refresher as to how we came to this point. So, okay, here, I'm showing you on the map. I'm showing you the current council districts. And I'm also showing you the 2010 census and the 2020 census. And the reason why we are showing you the 2010 census numbers is because your current districts are based on the 2010 census. And now we have the 2020 census. And as you can see, the population of the city grew from 1.4 million to 1.6 million. And here, the ideal population, like the councilwoman said, our goal is to make sure that all the districts have equal population. So back then, our goal was 180,000 per district. And now, our goal is 201,017 for each district. So with that, when we evaluated the current council districts, we found that the maximum deviation, which is the difference between the most populated and the least populated district. Back then, it was 4.74%, which was great. But now, it's 14.45%, and so we do need to redistrict. So having said that, I wanted to show you this slide. It's a handout outside that if you would like, you can get a copy of it. It's also on the website. And here, it's showing you that our target for each district is 201,000. And any district which is under this dotted line, they needed to gain population. And the ones which had over the dotted line, they needed to lose some population. So having said that, I just want to talk a little bit about the redistricting criteria that was used to develop the plans that I'm going to show you today. So here, we have the legal requirements. And that is that each district should be as equal in population as possible. And the maximum deviation threshold, overall, it should be under 5%. And for each individual district, it should be under 1%. And then, of course, we need to comply with the Voting Rights Act. And we need to make sure that we preserve the minority voting rights. So other guidelines, as you may know or remember from last time, is that we do need to keep the communities of interest together as much as possible, okay? Then the district should be compact, contiguous. And when we draw new districts, we should still try to preserve the core of the current districts. The current incumbents should still be living in the districts they represent. And that, we should preserve the political subdivisions. So here in Phoenix, we are using the county precincts. And we are trying to keep the precincts together as much as possible. So now that I spoke about the census data and talked about the redistricting guidelines, I just want to talk to you about the public submissions. Soon after our round one meetings, which ended on June 28th, the city, what they did was they opened up an application where community members could draw their own maps. And they could come up with what they thought should be the ideal districts. And we did receive 36 maps. And the period that we could accept those maps was from June 29th through August 1st. So we did get 36 maps. And 16 community members, they authored multiple submissions. And what we did was we labeled them COP sub 1 through 36. And then we evaluated them all to see if they complied with the redistricting guidelines. And that, we could bring them out, select them, and bring them out for you to see. So our analysis included tests for compactness, precinct splits, maximum deviation, majority-minority districts, and incumbency. And finally, we are here to present two plans to you. And the maps are out there here. And they are also available to you as handouts. And we call them Alternative A and Alternative B. So Alternative A is based on the feedback that we received from you in round one meetings. And Alternative B is one of the 36 maps which was selected to present to the community. We did make some minor tweaks to make sure that it was completely in compliance with the redistricting criteria. So below here, as you can see, there is a table. And we are just providing you with the statistics. So current districts, like I told you in the previous slide, the maximum deviation is 14.45%, which is not within the compliance. So, and then Alternative A and B, they have deviations under 5%. So you can see here 1.38% and 1.90%. And when you look at precinct splits, in the current districts, we have 31 split precincts. And in Plan A, we tried to do better. So we have 25 split precincts. And in Plan B, we have 42. Then we also looked at compactness score. So the compactness score is about 21, 23, 25%. And then we also looked at how many precincts are being reassigned. So in Plan A, we have 22 precincts. And in Plan B, we have 33 precincts which are being moved to a different district. So with that, I'm going to take you to Alternative A. And Alternative A, we have an overall map. And of course, we are going to focus on District 8 here. So you can see the changes, the black line, you can see is the current districts. And the shaded line with a red outline is what is being proposed. And here, we have a listing of all the 22 precincts which are being moved from their current district. So you can get a list of them here. And the syntax, if you look at the syntax in the table, if it says D2, comma, 3, that means this current precinct or this precinct is currently split between D2 and D3. And what we are doing is assigning it completely to District 3. So that is the syntax. And I do want to say that these PowerPoints are going to be on the website, so you can always go back and check. So here, then the other thing we said, we wanted to ensure that we have a majority-minority population and that minorities are properly represented. So what we did was we looked at the current map. And as you know, there are four majority Hispanic districts and four majority non-Hispanic white districts. So when we looked at Alternative A, we wanted to ensure that we still have 4 and 4. And that is what we are showing here. And we looked at total population as well as voting age population. And we have highlighted it in yellow, so you can see that these are the majority districts, okay? So moving on to Alternative B. You can see the map on the left-hand side. It's an overall map of the city. And on the right side, we provide you with the table. And in the table, we list all the precincts which are being reassigned. So you can take a look at them later. And we are going to go in detail just for D8 precinct changes. So like for Alternative A, Alternative B maintains the 4 and 4, 4 Hispanic majority and 4 non-Hispanic white majority districts. So now we are going to look at District 8 in detail. So on this slide, what I'm showing you is Alternative A and Alternative B. District 8 is shaded in green. And you can see the black and white dotted line is your current districts. And you can see the changes. Wherever you see the red outline, you can see the changes. And basically, if you look at the two maps, you can see that Alternative A has four changes and Alternative B has three changes. So we will look at them in more detail, so you can see better. So this is the overall map. And then on the top, we have the top part of District 8. And we have done it so that you can see the precinct names and you can read the major roads. So here, the precincts that are being changed, especially here, if you look at Alternative A, we have Creighton Precinct, which is currently in D8, and it's now being assigned to D4. This one over here, Creighton Precinct, and this, you can see, it's over here. And then we have the Mayflower Precinct. And the Mayflower Precinct, you can see, is currently split between D6 and 8. And we are combining it and assigning it to D6. So these areas, you can see, are being taken away from D8, and they are assigned to other neighboring districts, which is D4 and D6. Make sense? And now, if you look at the southern part of District 8, and the reason why we did it, so that we could zoom it enough so you could see it. So you can see here that Levine District is currently in D7, and it's now being assigned to D8. So if you look at Levine Precinct, it's over here. And it is currently in D7, and it's being assigned to D8. Now Olney Precinct, which is right here. Olney Precinct is currently split in 7 and 8, and it's now being assigned to D8. So you can see Olney is over here, and currently it's split between D7 and D8, but we put it together in D8. So here, if you look at it, Olney and Levine, you can see them in more detail here. So that is Alternative A, okay? So now, let's look at Alternative B. And in Alternative B, if you can see, that Creighton Precinct remains where it is. And Mayflower, they did the same change as in Alternative A. So Mayflower is currently split in D6 and D8, but now it's in D6. So it's taken away from D8, and it's being completely put in D6, just like Alternative A. Now Ruby Precinct is also split in 6 and 8, and it's going to D6 in Alternative B. And if you want to know where the Ruby Precinct is, it's over here. And you look at Westford Ho, and it's currently being split between 7 and 8. And now, it's split in 4 and 7. And it does not have any changes. So you can see Levine remains with D7, and Olney remains the way it is. So Alternative B proposes these changes, nothing in the southern part of T8. And now, I'm going to just show it to you in another slide comparatively. So you can see here that the changes, Mayflower changes the same in both. And Levine and Olney is only in Alternative A. And then you got the Ruby and Westford Ho in Alternative B. And on this slide, I just wanted to remind you of the overall statistics for Alternative A and Alternative B. And with that, I have presented to you Alternative A and B. And here we are to seek your comments, your feedback, and also to address any questions that you may have. And with that, the floor is yours.
See, we have two comment cards already. The first, Michael Rogers.
Thank you. I love going first. I've lived in the area of District 8, that is in the upper right-hand corner of District 8, on both maps, A and B. Nothing changed around my house. But I've been living there since 1988, and I chair the Papago Vista Neighborhood Association at 40th Street in McDowell. We go from 36th to 40th, and from McDowell to Oak, fully contained by District 8. In one of the previous redistricting events, 10 years ago possibly, we were part of District 6, and we got moved into District 8. They changed the boundary. So we've been in District 8 for at least 10 years, maybe 20. I don't know. It's been a rough ride, because what we found is that when we were in District 6, there was a lot of resources coming our way from the city. Because District 6 takes in a lot of Arcadia and then split down into Awatuki. Our neighborhood, right at 40th and McDowell, was essentially the neediest neighborhood, roughly, in District 6. When we became part of District 8, which includes East Phoenix, South Phoenix, all the way out to Levine, we essentially became one of the crown jewels of District 8. So unfortunately, what we saw, and this is just simply the reality of it, what we saw was an extreme drop-off in resources coming into our area because clearly, other parts of District 8 needed those resources much more than we did. So it wasn't hard to understand, but it wasn't the most optimal situation for my neighborhood and my neighbors. Now, we went through several council persons through that, you know, Michael Johnson, Kate Gallego, Carlos Garcia. I have to say that we are very encouraged that Councilwoman Hodge-Washington prevailed in the runoff election. She's already been out to our neighborhood to check on what we need and what can be better done. And I honestly support her and her office in her efforts to help us continue to thrive as a neighborhood. We've been fighting as a neighborhood association since the mid-1990s, and I've been involved since then. And I say "fighting" because we're kind of on the edge. In Polite Company, our neighborhood was termed a transitional neighborhood because we're right on the cusp between Arcadia and the blight that comes through with graffiti, crime, drugs, et cetera, et cetera. We're still fighting. I think, like I say, we are encouraged. We're not going anywhere. District 6, Kevin Robinson, Councilwoman Robinson; District 8, Councilwoman Hodge-Washington. I think we're going to be well taken care of in either sense. But I know this is important, and I felt it was important to point out the history and what we've experienced in our area. I had people calling me saying, hey, they're going to enlarge District 6. Do you guys want to be a part of it? Again, I'm torn, and it's not a bad situation to have. We're thankful that Councilwoman Hodge-Washington is listening and that she's in our area and talking with the leaders and talking with the neighbors. But that's my take on it. When you do these types of things, I know you try to include like demographics as much as possible. That's not always possible, because your driving force is population numbers. Got it? I'm hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second comment comes from Vicky Anderson.
I'm late coming to the game. I wish I'd been to the first meeting. I have one question, just a question on when these districts were actually set up? Like, what year were these set up?
You mean the current districts as they are right now?
Yeah, as they are.
Yeah, they were done after the 2020 census, so they actually became effective in 2012.
These were done in...
I'm sorry, the 2010 census. You're talking about the current districts right now?
Yeah, 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 the current district.
Yeah, they were done after the 2010 census, and they went into effect in 2013.
Okay, so how did the two wealthiest districts get in, or two wealthiest areas get in District 6? It's very confusing. This is the one thing that's always confused me when I look at these maps, is, you know, we come across, and we have, you know, pretty evenly. But man, to get the Awatuki, to get up here to almost Paradise Valley? That seems a little odd to me.
Yeah, you're not alone in asking that question. That's one of the most common ones we've gotten. That District 6 configuration goes back to 1990. When we first set up the district system in 1982, when the voters approved the district system and we redistricted, or drew the initial lines in 1983, Awatuki and most of the area south of South Mountain was not in the city yet. It was vacant land, and the Awatuki community had not been annexed. So that area was drawn into District 8. By 1987, the city annexed Awatuki, which brought in 60-some thousand mostly non-Hispanic white population. And adding that population to the adjoining District 8 would have diluted the minority voting rights in District 8 and been improper. So that configuration of District 6 was drawn so that the minority population, or the non-minority population in Awatuki would be made part of another non-minority area. And the closest area for that was District 6. So that's how those two areas came together. And that preserved the minority voting rights in District 7 and 8 by not adding that large number of non-Hispanic white population into those two districts.
Okay, so the idea was you keep four districts that are mostly Hispanic and four districts who are mostly non-Hispanic. But what that does, just as, and I'm going to, because I live in, right downtown, just south of the ballpark in Central Park neighborhood. So what that does is all the money goes to the mostly non-Hispanic areas, to be honest. And I, you know, he just told you the exact thing that happened to him, because he's the crowning jewel of District 8. It's disturbing that that's the way it's broken up. As a person just thinking on fairness, you would think it'd be nice to have equal districts of equal representation, of equal demographics. So either map to me is a little bit, for District 8, really minute, and I don't know. So again, I'm sorry I came at this at the secondhand, but I just don't know that one area maybe is better than another. And maybe you can tell us what you think about. Do you have any opinions on which one is more beneficial to our district, Councilwoman?
I see the pros and cons of both map, and I'm specifically delaying my decision on a map until I hear from the community's feedback, because I don't want it to be made solely in isolation, because it does affect the community.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I was going to say, I need more speakers. Can you just state your name for us, please?
Marissa Tessenzong. And I live in Creighton District currently. We had pushed to help to get Keisha nominated into office. And so Alternative A would really start us from scratch with a new council person. She's new, but she came out to our meetings. As Mike Rogers said, he, you know, lives a few miles from us. She started meetings. We've, you know, been working together. We are starting a coalition with these other neighborhoods. And essentially, within our coalition, our particular block watch would be put into a whole different district. So everybody else would stay District 8. We would now be District 4. So us in particular, we would be dealing with two council people trying to make change in our neighborhoods. So Alternative B, that keeps and preserves Creighton as part of District 8, would be, you know, ideal for our particular neighborhood. We have a lot of crime and drugs that are in our neighborhood. So, you know, we've been working very hard for the past year on trying to make movements on those kinds of things and to change the neighborhood, to include our neighbors into meetings. And I just think that this would kind of really stall our progress to have to... And I just think that this would kind of really stall our progress, to have to start back over. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Okay, so Councilwoman Hodge-Washington, thank you again for hosting this community meeting. Thank you for all, all of our attendees today. We appreciate you spending your Saturday morning with us. And thank you for your involvement in the redistricting process. The next steps, we have two more meetings on Monday. And then staff will be making our final recommendation for council consideration and approval on September 20th. And that will be at the policy session, I'm sorry, September 26th. Thank you, Denise. On Tuesday, September 26th, at 2:30 PM. And that will be the City Council Policy Session. So thank you again for your attendance today. Have a wonderful weekend.